This is a call, the meeting, the last meeting of the year, I think, official, regular scheduled meeting of the city council of West Helena for Tuesday, December thirteenth. The order will start with the prayer and the pledge.
Through the words, prayer. Our Father. Give us to stay our day, red. And because of our trespasses, as we go down, we have to pass against that. We have a desire to teach a patient, but a little rest for me. And this kingdom of our glory. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the people of the Republic of which it stands, and one like an under God, indivisible, delivered in Jesus' cross.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. We want to welcome KJIW, who's doing our broadcast and also our Zoom cast and all those on Zoom, as well as the home of West Helena world, who joins us by Zoom and anybody else, any other guests. Ms. Ramsey Calvo, Colorado.
Davis, St. Columbia.
Present.
Rocket. Franklin. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Here.
Three present, three absent.
All right. So we're going to start tonight with the teen court grant. Do recall, Ms. Davis enters. Mark her present. Teen court grant, we have to approve the appropriation of the funds. We discussed this previously. One way to do this. We don't have it in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. All right, at the back of your packet, maybe.
Yeah.
Phillips County teen court. Dr. Sharon Anthony, who's run this program for a long time. And various capacities, we want to shout out to her and her team. Who have run this program for quite a while. There's a description of the program in your, in your packet. This is essentially a pass through grant. It's $30,000. It's awarded by the Arkansas Coalition for Juvenile Justice in conjunction with the Arkansas Department, the Human Services Division of Youth Services. And the grant period actually has already begun, but we've been unable to do the appropriation part of it for district court, which is the, the area of the city that administers the program. Any questions or comments about the program? I think the question is, we need, on the tables, we need a resolution to adopt and appropriations for the $30,000 awarded Dr. Anthony put in program in order for municipal court to administer it. Is there a motion or are there any questions?
I'll move.
Mr. Etherly moves adoption. Mr. Franklin, second to motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, Colorado.
Love you.
Yeah.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis. Forward. Etherly.
Yes.
Rocket. Five years from now.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Anthony, and good luck on continued successful program. And for the public, that, that program works with mostly high school students and they work in our court system to learn how the court system works. And it's been a very successful program for our community for some time. The next item on the, on the agenda, approval of invoices exceeded the mayor's spending limit.
I did a summary of all of the invoices that we had for several meetings out on the table. Three of them require ordinances, which you've had copies of the ordinances that were prepared by the city attorney. The others just require a motion since they do not exceed $7,500. The first one is, if you would like to entertain them this evening, is for an invoice to emergency vehicle specialists for turnout gear for the fire department, four sets. They were ordered in March of 2022 and billed in July when they arrived. The amount is $9,372.12.
Turnout.
That's the turnout gear they have to wear when they go to the fires. They, they don't last, but about three, three and a half years, so we have to keep replacing. But the city attorney did prepare an ordinance. It would be ordinance number thirty-nine. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to waive bidding for equipment for the firefighters and other related purposes.
So.
Oh.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
I move, thanks, Lord, and call third final reading, reading title only.
All right, Mr. St. Columbia moves that we put ordinance number thirty-nine on third final rating, reading title only. Is there a second? Mr. Franklin seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? Not Colorado.
Franklin.
Yeah.
Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Five, yes, one absent.
So the next motion, anybody, you want to read the?
The title is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to waive bidding for major equipment purchase for the fire department.
This, this Franklin moves adoption, the ordinance, and that's the third file ready and seconded by Mr. St. Columbia. Any questions or comments? If not, Colorado.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Davis. Franklin.
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
Motion.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the emergency clause on ordinance number thirty-nine? Mr. Frank, Mr. Franklin moves, or St. Columbia seconds the motion. Any questions or comments? If not, Colorado.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Next, next ordinance.
The next one is number forty. Ordinance of two emergency equipment specialists for the fire department. The work was ordered in October of twenty-one. The work was not completed and we were not billed until March of twenty-two. The amount is $8,863.95 to repair leaking valves on one of the fire pumpers.
Second.
Ms. Franklin move, was it where ordinance number forty?
Number forty.
Ms. Franklin moves that we put ordinance number forty on third and final reading, seconded by Mr. St. Columbia. Any comments, questions? If not, Colorado.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
Motion passes. You'll read them.
Okay, motion for an adoption, an ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas annotated section fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, to enter into contract to waive bidding for major equipment repairs for the fire department.
So motion for adoption. Mr. St. Columbia moves the adoption of ordinance number forty, seconded by Mr. Franklin. Any questions or comments? If not, Colorado.
Franklin.
Yeah.
Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
First clause.
Yes.
Franklin moves adoption, the emergency clause, seconded by Mr. St. Columbia. Any questions or comments? If not, Colorado.
Franklin. Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
Passes, kind of next ordinance.
Number forty-one. This is an ordinance for emergency equipment professionals for the fire department. It's for major repair work on a fire pumper. The fire pumper was taken down in April of twenty-two and we were billed in late April of 2022. The amount of the ordinance is $14,521.43.
Any questions?
I move, both of you play on third final reading.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we put ordinance number forty-one on third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly's second to motion. Any comments or questions about the motion? Not Colorado.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Davis.
Yeah.
Franklin. St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
Motion passes.
We talked. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to waive bidding for major equipment repairs for the fire department.
Is there a motion for final adoption? Mr. St. Columbia moves final adoption of ordinance number forty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Any comments or questions about the motion? If not, Colorado.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Franklin. Davis. Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
All right, thank you. The next series of invoices, I'll stick with you, Ms. Ramsey, that's okay to go down the list, but they do not require an ordinance, just a motion to pay, so.
Okay.
Ms. Ramsey.
The first one is for look at pump and well service for the water department. The date of the invoice is September of 2021. It was billed to us in October of 2022. It was for materials and labor to repair Toshiba pumps for the water department. The amount of the invoice is $5,907.33.
Any questions?
I believe that we pay that invoice.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we approve the invoice for $5,907.33. Is there a second? To look at. Pump and well service. Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion?
The likelihood of rate.
If not, Colorado.
Tomorrow.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item.
Is to a company called Dexter Fortson Incorporated. It's an invoice for the water department. Date of invoice was January fifth of twenty-two. It was billed on January the fifteenth of 2022. And the amount of $5,251.24 was service and repair of the water department's telemetry service.
What, what kind of service?
It's.
Telemetry.
telemetry, where the, the computers read.
Read the meter.
Read everything, yes.
Okay. I shall move. We pay that bill.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we pay the Dex reports and bill $5,251.24. Is there a second? Mr. Franklin seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, Colorado.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yeah.
Davis. Franklin. St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Next item.
Is an invoice for River City Hydraulics for the street department. The date of the invoice is September the twenty-seventh of twenty-two. And the amount of $5,065.78 is for the replacement of the tandem pump assembly for the street loader truck.
Any questions about the bill, River City Hydraulics?
I move, we pay that invoice.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we pay the invoice for River City Hydraulics, $5,065.78. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, Colorado.
Davis. Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Franklin. St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Next item.
The next one is to a company called Interstate Tapping Service for the water department. The invoices are dated November the fifth of 2022. It's two invoices, which would make it a serial contract. One is for $3,600. The other for $2,400. It's work on the same job for valve repla, pair and replacement of the leak on Plaza Street.
Any questions about the bill? Is there a motion to pay?
I shall move that we pay this invoice. The example.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we pay the invoice to Interstate Tapping Service for combined total of $6,000. Is there a second? Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, Colorado.
Davis. St. Columbia. Franklin. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. Five, yes, one absent.
One more, I think.
This one is for a company called Mid-South Tank Consultants. It's for the water department. The date of the invoice is November the seventh of 2022. The amount of the invoice is $5,950. We were required by the Arkansas Department of Health to have a preliminary ROV inspection of the tank on Reservoir Hill.
Mr. Franklin moves adoption. Is there a second? St. Columbia moves adoption of paying the invoice from Mid-South Tank Consultants for the ROV inspection of the Reservoir Hill tank for fifty-nine fifty. Any questions or comments? Not Colorado.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Yeah.
Davis. Franklin. St. Columbia. Five, yes, one absent.
I'll just add that last one was, was also, I think you mentioned, required per state compliance.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, the minutes for November fifteenth.
I didn't get those sent out. If they could have a moment, please, to look at them or I can read them or you can read them.
Don't have them. None of you. Everybody have November ten. Give you all a minute to read over.
Think be approved, be granted.
Second. Mr. St. Columbia moves adoption of the minutes for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Any questions? November.
The top page was the fifteenth and the last page was the sixteen.
Well, I think. We have the retirement of Mr. Patterson there.
Oh.
So fifteen or sixteen.
Oh, sorry.
Probably fifteen.
Okay.
So if you can see the second page, Mr. Patterson's announcement there, you'll see. You'll see that. Included. Still have motion and a second on the table. Any questions or comments about the minutes? If not, number, if not, Colorado.
St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Franklin. Davis. Forward.
Davis.
Etherly.
Yes.
I have four, yes, one absent, one abstention.
Right, motion passes. Minutes, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, special call meeting. Give you a chance to read that. Any questions, comments, revisions? Mr. Franklin moves adoption of the minutes, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Adoption minutes of November sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Any questions or comments? Motion. If not, Colorado.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward.
Absent.
Franklin.
Yes.
St. Columbia. Man.
I, yes.
We can bring those back. That won't be a, I'm not.
All right, so motion didn't pass on, on the sixteenth, for lack of a. Members here were present at the meeting to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis. It now they'll pass. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is that enough to pass? Motion passed on November sixteenth. Minutes of the next report is the Treasury Report. Absent tonight, so it's definitely made to the next available. Meeting. Added to the agenda, Mr. Scroggins couldn't be here due to an illness. And while I'm at it, we wish Mr. Andre Valley, our city attorney, well, he's out ill tonight. Before I fail to mention that. Mr. Scroggins has two proposals. And if you were reading the minutes from the previous meeting, you'll see a discussion there about the well. And there's a, an invoice in front of you from Jones Hydro Services, Jeff Jones. And in that, there's a. There's a, there's a. Make sure I get you started. Not from home. Okay. The. Make sure I tell you all right. This is the one we ordered approved.
This is the one.
So what he's proposing, and I just want to make sure I didn't tell you wrong. But. So in West Helena, we have one, one well really that's operating effectively and efficiently that's keeping West Helena going. And we're trying to get well number nine to a point where it is operating and, and working as well, so that if something were to happen to the other one, well number nine could be there. So we're in a precarious position in West Helena. What they did, it was discussed in the minutes, the last meeting was go in and they were hoping that the work that if you'll, if, do they all have this letter? I think you all have this letter. From Mr. Jones, basically, he discusses what they did to try and clean out the well so that it would be working. A brand new well is roughly a million dollars to build. So of course, we want to avoid having to build a new well. It'd be better to save this well. And so the, Mr., Mr. Jones, after completing the work that we did approve, it didn't work. It wasn't enough to do. He found, as often happens when you get down underneath things, you find more problems. There are more problems that need to be done. The work needs to be done to clean it up, clean it out, to make sure that it's meet state federal specifications for the Clean Water Act. And that's going to take sonar jet. To pressure jet the well, airlift the pump, agitate, test the pump. And the cost of that plus is twenty-four thousand plus tax. So he's incorporated that estimate. In the, I want to make sure this is all right. He's incorporated that in this next invoice, correct? And the thirty-two thousand four hundred five. What, what I know is that twenty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand plus tax has not been approved by the council. And so in order to him to perform that work tonight, you would have to agree to, to appropriate that amount or to approve that transaction in order for him to go forward. Mr. Scroggins urges that you move forward as quickly as possible because we are in a precarious system, situation in West Helena. And so that he can, he can get on this as quickly as possible. They believe this is all it will take. Now that they've been able to dig down deep into it and do lift all those, find those major layers out of it, this is what it will take to get it working again. And I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
Is, this is a proposal. To take the well that we've got and erect it. Well, it's fifty years old, as I understand it. It's only pumping two to three hundred gallons a minute. They're trying to achieve seven hundred fifty gallons a minute. And try to save that well, a lot better than trying to build a new well at a million dollars. So they've already tried a couple of times, haven't they, to clean it up?
Yeah, they've been working on this well for probably months, several months now.
We've invested a lot of money in this well. We might as well continue to try to clean this well up rather than to build a new one. So. If this is going to take what it takes to do it, I suggest we move forward with it. We got to have the water.
Any other questions or?
So.
Mr. Well, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I, I don't see, I don't personally see the sonar jet in this proposal. I don't see the sonar jet in the spec page. That's why I was, I was reluctant to say that it was. I, I think it might be in addition to this. But I don't know that. But I would rather you assume that it is than assume that it's not because I know it is twenty-two thousand additional than what you've already approved. That's what I know.
So what's he asking for, the twenty-four thousand or the thirty?
Twenty-two thousand plus tax. Twenty-two thousand plus tax.
Twenty-four. This is twenty.
I'm sorry, twenty-four, yeah.
Okay, and then it started to go back in the different.
I believe it is, but I wish. Let me go back and look there minutes.
Ms. Ramsey, do you know?
So it, it looks like. What she approved before was, at the special call meeting, was nineteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. So. If you want to add the math to that, it looks like it is about that. It's just nineteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. So what you would be approving. Is an additional twenty-four thousand plus tax tonight. Exactly. So you approved the nineteen thousand eight nineteen twenty-eight in a special call meeting. That work was done. And what they discovered was the need to do this other work in order to get where we want it to be, to meet state specifications to use it. So they need your approval for an additional twenty-four thousand plus tax to finish the job.
Okay, but what is the thirty-two?
Well, I don't. I don't see that Mr. Mr. Strong is in here, but.
It's just like two different.
It's two different things, huh? So this is saying that they're going to use a shot. So it's saying they're using some kind of.
It looks like two, you know. It looked like two different things.
Yeah, so this on here is saying they're going to use a shot. On this, they're saying they're using some kind of.
Enclosed screen, using explosive shot waves.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm going to submit and, and, and I'll, with the, with the. The weakness in not having Mr. Scroggins here, the thirty-two thousand four hundred and five dollars, it does include the twenty-four thousand dollars in addition to installing a pump. And, and so I believe it would be thirty-two thousand four hundred and five mistakes. Yeah. It's not, it's not very clear. I'm sorry for that. It's not, it's not very clear, I'm sorry for that, Mr. Scruggs can be here to be a little bit. It looks to me like that's what that is.
With the grade that we apply for, like.
I think the answer is probably no. And I, I can explain that in greater depth. Or we can just talk about this and then I'll go with the grant. But unfortunately, I think the answer, that's, I, I couldn't, again, it would be helpful, Mr. Scruggs, we're hearing that one too. It might be included in that one, but. Out of four applications that were sent. Now, there were other items in that grant, and I'm not saying this is not in there, but I wouldn't presume that it is. When you vote. Ms. Carrigan, sorry.
What work was done with the nineteen thousand that we already approved?
Well, in the minutes, it talks about the. But basically what they did was go in there and try to repair it. And they couldn't repair it because of all the, the broken junk that's in there, and it's going to have to be completely cleaned out, the parts, some of the parts replaced. Some of them cleaned out, taken out and then replaced. And then a new pump installed in the bottom of it. So this shockwave. Thing he mentions is twenty-four thousand of that in the sonar jet. But before you came in, I explained, Mr. Mr. Scroggins, he's ill tonight, couldn't be here, so if you want to wait, you want to table this, that's. I'm not going to object to you tabling it so you can get more answers you want. But that's my understanding of it.
Okay, so they, they used the nineteen thousand that was approved, but they couldn't fix anything.
It did not, it did upstate, that's, that's right, you're right. They did fix some things, but it wasn't enough.
What I'm looking at here, it, it formed like a concrete. And, and the well, and didn't allow the water to flow through. And they're trying to break it up, I guess.
Sediment and all of that stuff, and that you don't want in your water. Over the years, that screen has gathered sediment and gotten so hardened that it was, it's going to take this sonic jet thing to, to break it up. That's a great.
I suggest we move forward on this because it's vital that the people in West Helena have sufficient water.
Mission, because we don't have it. And yes, it is vital that they have water.
So it sounds like consensus of the council's title. Mr. Scroggins' request on the. Well, number nine. So the other thing that he. So the other thing he wanted to make you aware of is there are three lift pumps, these are, these are also sewer. They're about forty-two fifty-seven apiece that need to be replaced. Or else they're in critical condition.
You know, we want to, I wouldn't mind having a special call meeting. So that we could get more information from Mrs. Scroggins and we could. Do an ordinance. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but.
I have no objection to that. Any objection to having a special call meeting to getting ordinance prepared and also a little more detailed information from Mr. Scroggins. If, if not, then that's what we'll do. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, so Mr. Scroggins, when we bring this up as well, the lift pumps. That lift up. For our lift stations are old and. He's put one, one thing in front of him to consider, and, and you know, we might want to add this to, we want to have a special call, we might as, we might as well add this to it. However, roses, but just to make sure of it, their workstation, their lift pumps for forty-two fifty-seven each. If there's no objection, can we add that to the special call meeting? The, the other two issues that Mr. Carter passed tonight, that would require further action anyway. And the other one is on your desk and it's. Prices of two pumps, and these are pumps that would replace the. The ones that were running. And that, and that price is maybe pretty.
I must be looking at something.
I'm sorry.
Why, why this on the day?
Mr. Scroggins wanted to pass it out tonight, bring it to your attention, so. It's something that needs to be done, that would need to be done, approved by the council. Well, but all three of them together would be, it would be that time story. It's what. And so because of that, you would have to approve it, and Mr. Scroggins asked us to.
And we need, so is that an additional one or an additional two?
On the lift pumps.
His note on this.
He does say two on here, I thought he told me he needed three. We can, we can. He has to have two because one is, would be a backup. And three would be ideal. Again, you would. At, at least two. And then maybe three. Ms. Ramsey reminded me that he wanted me to also let you know that we owe. Zion a hundred thousand dollars now, and we only leased four of them. And we're now only, we're down to leasing four of those pumps instead of. A hundred thousand.
We still need, for what we've been paying for rent on one pump, we could have bought these pumps.
Yes, ma'am, we've had this conversation many, many, many times to just table, but if you would, don't mind. Before that, to the special call meeting, and we'll add all these items to.
Talking about it now, why we got to move to the special call meeting?
Because that's when we would take action on it.
When special call meetings, I'm going to be out of office, so I definitely make this plan. You got, you even spent, you owe people a hundred, that's funny. Don't forget, Mr. Man. You got a hundred thousand dollar big bill that you owe somebody for rental or something. Well, you could have replaced three pumps with that hundred thousand dollars, make it make sense.
Ms. Crockett, I've been making sense of it for four years now, and I'm not going to waste any more of the public's time on something we'll have. Which we've discussed many, many times, we can discuss it again when we have a special call meeting, which will be before the end of the year. And you will have.
A pump for thirty-five thousand dollars, you just told me to rent one for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Again, I have not only told you that, I've given out the minutes that showed that I told you if we didn't, what would happen. Yes, ma'am, even to the dollar. Of what we would owe a year later if we didn't buy them. Which this council goes to unappropriate the money to purchase them. And those are all in the minutes, and I, we don't have to kick that dead horse again, we're going to have a special call meeting on it. And y'all can do what you want, and then hopefully we can get Mr. Scroggins here for it, okay?
What we come to the meeting for, you're going to be the only somebody to talk. And, and you don't want to talk about what we talking about.
I'm trying my best to get people's business type. And, and we decided to have a special call meeting.
I want to talk like that right now. I want to see, do you have a minute, miss, when he. Do you have minutes where it would show that he told us that we could purchase the pump for thirty-five thousand dollars? And knew of renting them for thirty-five thousand dollars, it's the minutes that said it. Okay, you adapt. Okay.
Well, I can tell you, it was, it was.
Nobody believes you.
Well, you asked the question. Ms. Crockett, it's in the minutes.
Well, get them, that's all I'm asking for.
I've already given them to you multiple times. And, and I'm not here to be argumentative with you tonight, this is, this is old ground. Many, many times. And it is what it is, we'll have the special call meeting, if you want to go over again, I'll bring the minutes back then. But it's not on the agenda for tonight, but what is next on the agenda is an invoice from contractor Jimmy Hines. With our parking lot at City Hall. Mr. Mr. Hines. Did some work on the parking lot, City Hall, it wasn't. The, doing the job to the extent that I thought it should be, would go over five thousand dollar limit. And so we walked around it, I told him what I thought was, needed to be done in order to make that parking lot. Project sufficient, and including some of the gaps of hull water and the spray on the side of the bricks that would have to be removed. And so forth. The part that he wants to do that's over my spending limit is in this sentence. So my time, I would put it on the agenda and y'all can make a decision.
We get some of this over your spending limit.
That Hines Enterprise invoice would, would take that project over my spending limit, yes.
It must be some more, because this said forty-eight.
Yes, ma'am, but once you combine that with what he's already done, it would be over my spending limit. I'm saying that the forty-eight fifty would, would put it over five thousand, I've told him that that invoice would have to be.
The other invoice, I think is what she's asked. How much is the other invoice for?
I mean, I don't know the answer.
You've already paid the other one and then you want, and you want to pay this, is that what you're saying?
Ms. Davis, I told him I put it on the agenda, you don't have to approve it if you don't want to. It would finish the parking lot, and he's going to, he's going to remove the blacks off the brick anyway, because I thought that was. Needed to be done regardless, but there's some other issues out there, it's going to cost more money, if you want to do those things, you can, if you don't, you don't have to.
Man, you're getting offensive about it. What has he done? How much did that cost? You're not telling us those details, you give us an invoice to say he need to do some seal coating. Before the eight fifty, but we, and you said it's going to put it over your limit, we don't, how much was the first invoice? What did he do? At that, has it been paid?
Ms. Cargit, if you don't want to do this invoice, it's okay, I'm not. I'm not asking you to do it, I'm merely putting it on the agenda because Hines, Hines wanted to finish the job. And do it right, and I talked to him about what I thought it would take to do it right, and that's the estimate he came up with. The estimate for what he did is not your packet, I didn't do your packet. But Ms. Ramsey just said it was.
The smaller invoice that we had paid was twenty-eight fifty for the striping and some of the work he did out there. This will put it over the mayor's spending limit of five thousand.
See, well, that would be two different invoices.
It'd be one job.
No, 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 not minutes we didn't have all year that he done paid. For somebody to come lay a brick and then come back and put some wood on top of. The, on the first invoice, it shows that he, what he was, it does show a description of what he supposed to do. Did he do what was on that description? Okay, he, he completed what was, that he was contracted to do on the first invoice. Okay, so that don't, this is, this is, this is not included in the first invoice, this was not included in the first contract, so. You still playing games today?
I'm not, I'm not playing games, Ms. Crockett, if you want to complete the parking lot project or not, it's totally up to you. I'm not making a recommendation one way or another. I won't be parking there very long.
They actually have the parking lot done, all we're trying to do is get clarity, you can't bring a bill that says. Is forty-eight fifty and it's going to be over your spending limit and your spending limit is five thousand, that doesn't even make sense. And we don't even have what the first invoice was, so that's like she said, that's two different invoices. And then you trying to turn it around and say, well, y'all don't want to pay it, it's not that, why would we?
Okay, so the first invoice will get to you if you want it, but. As has been pointed out many times, once it goes over my spending limit, y'all have to approve it, and this would put it over my spending.
No, it won't, because the first contract was something totally different. There was nothing in the first contract that said that he was supposed to be fixing part of. The first contract from what you were saying, and Mr. Ramsey, is that he was supposed to stripe it and pay. He did that, right? That was not part of the first contract, right, Ms. Ramsey?
We turn that in more.
I paid the twenty-eight fifty yet.
So he, 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 he got paid for what he was asked to do. This is something that's coming back because the mayor has said something that all of that should have been in one invoice, in my opinion. If you're going to come back and, the man did the work, he been paid, but this is something else that you're asking him to do, this is not the same invoice. I don't know why, well, I know, I don't, let me let it go.
Serial contract.
The only reason that, that I've said that he would have to come. This would have to come back with the council is because it would make it over five thousand dollars and. It would be the same, similar project, similar enough that it would, could be accused of being a serial contract. Now, we do have contracts, and we do have work over five thousand dollars for similar projects or same projects all the time that y'all have to approve. And some, and some aren't, that you don't, and there's, might be disagreement about what it is, but this is one, I agree, Mr. Edley, so. You can decide to approve it or not, it's totally at your discretion. But what it would do is level out the parking lot, where those divots are that collect rainwater, it would do. A better job of paving. Paving it, and it would also seal the job so that it would last longer. And that's the, that's the forty-eight fifty that he's proposing to do. On the parking lot, I believe it would be considered one project. And I don't have Mr. Valley here to. To expand on the serial contract nature of it. But I promised Mr. Hines I would bring it before you and put it on the agenda, and I have. Filled my promise, so it is up to you at this point. No, sir. No, sir.
It's not been done?
No, sir.
Have y'all responded to me?
I, I think there's more important things to take up at this point.
So. Um, it doesn't seem to be any consensus. Unless there's somebody else, it doesn't seem to be any consensus to approve this. Um, so I do want to go back to the grant situation that Mr. Franklin was leading to earlier when it comes to. The good news, uh, that we were saved from the state. You recall, we have a public hearing, um. Um. Back a month or so ago. A federal government release, uh. I think it was three hundred and fifty million dollars to the state of Arkansas, three hundred and forty. Uh, for distributions to municipal and and regional water utility. Uh. Uh, and cities for improvement of water and sewer infrastructure. Um, doing this from memory, but I want to say there was something like. Nine hundred proposals for applicants. Um, we didn't make the first round, which was. I think fifty three, but we came in, uh, the second round and third place out of. Twenty three, I believe it was, and I went up to Little Rock for the meeting. And also talked and met with the commissioners and the staff about it and we had four proposals. That were presented, two for sewer and two for water. There was a four million dollar proposal for replacement of water lines to fix our water leaks that made it to number three. On the second round list, which should be funded in March. The director and commission directed those in the top. Seven, I believe it was. Um, to commence those projects and is anticipate full reimbursement for. Those projects that were approved in that grant. Um, to be reimbursed as early as March. Any work not completed by March. Would go through a different approval process, invoicing approval process, but the good news is, long story short. Out of, in, out of a significant amount of competition. On a very, uh, rigorous process. Uh, four million dollars or three point nine million to be exact was approved for replacement of our. Uh, water lines, uh, that are leaking and then needed to be replaced a long time ago and, and we were given the okay. Um, by, uh. By the agency to proceed with that work on reimbursement basis. I talk to Mr. Skagans, of course, you have to have cash to do those things in order to be reimbursed. Um, there are ways to get low interest loans to begin that process from the very same agency. Um, it's practically free money so that you can commence. That would have been the probably the next step on this project. Uh, and I won't be here to do it, but I'd recommend that you see. Uh, look into doing that so that you can commence replacing those lines being reimbursed. In March. So that's good news for the city. Um. I don't have to tell anybody around this table. How important and how significant a problem it is to replace our, just. I'll be glad to take your questions. Don't have anything for you to do tonight. Be glad to take your questions you might have. All right. Uh, I want to also be quick to, uh. To. Recognize how swift our police department was. To respond to ZF Rall last Friday, I think it was, to an incident. That could have gotten out of hand and, and ultimately made, uh. Had I been had a tragic end, uh, ending. The school staff that stayed. Apparently, um, did everything they were, had been trying to do and pulled it off extremely well. Now, police department, I was told, made it in two minutes. Response time was two minutes. We were able to. Run down the suspect, apprehended suspect, and there was no injury, no shooting. No, no, uh, no physical victims and. That's a real testament to our police department, I think, and I want to, and our school. And I want to shout out to them, um, before this is over. And I'm going to let anybody, uh, at this point.
And we don't.
And Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah. So having said that, uh. If if we are coming towards the end of the meeting, I wanted to recognize. Two of our departing council members and ask them if they wanted to make any parting comments. At all, after their time of service. On the council, Mr. Lord. Mr. Crockett. No comments, so. I want, I want to make a few and, uh, then I'll.
Just, if, if, if I may.
Sure.
Before you, I don't, because I don't want, I'm the chief, that last one. We have one item of bills that say we need to take care of. We haven't got to the budget. We need to extend our current motion until February first of next year.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
So move.
Mr. Adley makes a motion that we extend the current budget, uh, this year, twenty twenty two into, uh, January.
February first, February first.
Until February first, uh, twenty twenty three, segment by Mr. Franklin. Any questions or comments about the motion? Not called it.
I'm on the.
Yeah.
Pocket.
Yes.
Yes.
Don't we have another, another meeting since we moved the meeting back? We have one more meeting because we, we changed the, the December sixth meeting because of the election. So this is the first meeting for the month. With, with the new people coming, with the new administration, new calcium incoming, I think we should have some kind of. Workshops or something to see, get them to get a feel on something, how this process works.
I agree. I think it's great. Any other comments?
Well, when they spend about me.
Hasn't been seen.
I'll, I'm going to let staff get with you on a good time and hopefully that will be a. Uh, the staff getting gone, good times, dates to meet this special. Unless you want to set it down.
You said Mrs. Friar the sixth, so we probably need to wait and find out when he can meet the person.
All right, so the staff will follow up on, um. With you on some good times and dates when Mr. Skagans can be here. Um. So I just want to say, first of all. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Franklin, uh, our mayor elect. And to those new council members who are elected, I want to thank the council members who are leaving as well for your service in the city. Uh, this year marks thirty years since I was first elected to office. Uh, I was. Uh, that's half my lifetime ago. Uh, thirty eight years ago, I started public service. Uh, in the rarefied era of the US Senate and as a young man. And, uh. Public service has meant a lot to me. And I would just say that it's been a great honor to serve. My city, cities, uh, haven't seen and have had the privilege given to me by. People like Senator Bumpers and Bill Clinton and then the voters of my senate district and the city. To, to work on their behalf. I have seen public service, public life. At every level of government, federal and state, now local. And the cities, which were the first, it's the first entities of government that are invented are still today. And even more so today, the only place where real change can happen. Um, I've learned and I've, I've seen it at every level and been it and been there and done things at every level. And what you do is extremely important. Uh, not to be taken lightly and most changes still can happen here when you look at the dysfunction. It goes on all over the world and in Washington. Um. And wouldn't, thank you for your public service. People ask me all the time, how can you sit there and take? That kind of abuse and verbal abuse and disrespect and, and still do this. It discourages a lot of people. Uh, I don't know anybody in public office who hasn't. Had to deal with embarrassment, humiliation, dishonesty and attacks and all the rest of it. Which prevents a lot of good people from running for office. And I say this to people who might be watching on Zoom. That, um, there's one thing at the end of it, and I've done this long enough to be able to say this, um. At least for myself. That makes all of that worthwhile and it is to be able to look at yourself in the mirror and, uh, feel good about who you are. And to feel like you made a difference. At the end of the day, the battles and the slights and the lies and all the ugly side of politics begin to fade. And you begin to think about the things that wouldn't have happened had you not been part of it. We've accomplished an awful lot, but not one thing was accomplished by myself. It all came with other people pitching in. And one person can't accomplish anything. This is a pluralistic country. And we have to govern and rule ourselves that way and work together. And I will just say to those who continue on. Fight if you want, but work together at the end of the day for the betterment of your citizens. Because at the end of your day. Uh, if you're like me, what will matter the most to you? Is what changed because you were in it. Or because you were in that battle, because you decided to step up. And. Uh, try to help your fellow man. And it may sound a little corny, but it's the truth and it's been the greatest honor of my life to be your mayor. Thank you very much. Sir, most to John.
So.
May Jaren, thank you.